To the Tuesday, February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three Planning Board meeting. Um, we do have a quorum, so I'm gonna do a roll call for um everyone who's here. Ah, Eicheng Scott.
Uh, present.
Nick Rosetos.
Present.
Sally Dale. Sally, you are muted.
Present.
Thank you, and I am the adjutist chair. I am also present with us today. We also have Brian Menter, Assistant Town Engineer. Um Nancy Polkari, our um recording secretary. Uh, we have Windcam. Thank you very much, Windcam. I should note that we are being recorded, so if you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video and your audio. And uh, something I always forget to say is you can always reach us at by email at planningboard@winchester.us. And that goes to the entire planning board. Um, so. This evening, we are um jam-packed. Uh, we have a our standard updates. We're gonna continue our public hearing on Rocky Ledge. Um, we have a number of ZDA petitions to discuss. Uh, in particular, we are, we have a. We're gonna discuss things which are, we have never come before this board before um in terms of a historical resource um. Not mitigation, preservation. Uh, we're gonna talk a little about the Master Plan Implementation Committee membership, and then we're going to go into of the construction of the uh performance plan for the town planner. So let me very quickly give you some updates. Um, so far, we have had four applications come in for the planning position. And uh, I'll circulate those to the board. On the MBTA Section Three A, uh, Jim Goldson and Associates is, I believe, actually getting paid now. Um, and so I know she's reached out to talk to Brian Zekeli, our former town planner. Um, and about what the work he and Brian Menter did.
Is that for the, that's for the MBTA zoning?
Yes, yes, yes.
And that was one of my questions for the, for the updates is uh. Is there a working group or is or or?
Yes, there's, there's a group that's composed of uh, myself and Sally, Jim Goldson, Town Manager, Town Council, Housing Partnership Board. I'm sure I've left someone else out.
It is.
Someone from the Select Board, yeah.
I guess my question is, are we gonna, i- is that gonna come before the Planning Board as a whole, so we can kind of see what, what's coming out of it? Are there minutes or any kind of um updates in that regard?
Um.
Or is it premature?
I think it's just getting started. Um, the idea is that uh Goldson and Associates would be helping us with the zoning in terms of tweaking, it's coming up with overlay zoning, which would bring us into compliance with that, and they have just started. This, this requires a lot of work with the model where they, they have this giant spreadsheet and they work with Brian Menter to do overlays. I'm sorry, to look at um GS, and so essentially, they're gonna be coming up with some recommendations to the board.
Um, okay, but we will be able to, um, will there be options? I mean.
Yes, 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 there will definitely be options.
Be able to decide on what.
Yeah, this is, this is a, a several month process, so they're just coming up to speed right now in terms of um things, so I, I wouldn't.
Okay, is it true that, is foreign place involved too?
They are involved, thank you. They are involved because they, not in terms of um, we want to make sure that they are cogn- cognizant of what uh Jim Goldson is doing, so that that all comes and meshes together. But the timeline for Jim Goldson's work is much shorter, because we're getting the, the money to pay her has to be spent within the next four months.
So it's her expertise, basically. She knows how to address the issues and.
Yeah, she's, she's um, yes, that's her expertise is, is in this area.
And then I just wanted a quick update on the Section Three Five Five, whether we're gonna have a, are we, are we gonna get a feedback from ZBA, or are we gonna have a joint meeting with them, or?
Well, let me, let me just get through the rest of my, my updates and I will.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Yep, no problem. So um, there's a, a project at eighty-seven, eighty-nine Cross Street, which was a a local initiative project, also known as a Friendly Forty B. Um, that's a, it's either a nine or ten unit.
Sorry.
Project, nine units, thank you. Uh, and two of the units, I believe, are at fifty percent AMI.
Uh, give me the address of that again.
Eighty-seven, eighty-nine Cross Street.
Okay, great.
Uh, so DHCD has approved, has issued an approval letter, so that's a co- co-proj- it's a, it's a joint project with the town on that, because it's a local initiative. Um, so the next stop is for the developer uh Mario Cavino to file a comprehensive application with the ZBA. So that's moving forward um in terms of the waterfield lot. Uh, just last night at the Select Board meeting, the Select Board approved an extension of the due diligence period. A Civico asked for an extension. There's apparently just some backlog in terms of getting some testing done, but there's there's nothing um of any concern, apparently, so it's just supply chain issues in a different sort. So that's moving forward. They're getting an extension uh until early March, so it probably won't be before this board until mid to late March, I would imagine. Uh, because we are the permitting authority for that one. Uh, the uh draft presentation of the, of the Transportation Master Plan was presented at last night's Select Board. Um, there are lots of projects in there. It was a sort of a thirty thousand foot overview. Um. That will um interact somewhat with what we were hoping to do at North Main Street. Um, since we haven't presented anything that hasn't part of that plan, so we're gonna have to work together with them. There's a lot of work, as usual, we are limited by money. There has, so the uh the lot next to the town pantry, which was where the old Mahoney House was, or Mahoney Building, uh, that has been under appeal for a while, and uh summary affirmance of the land court decision upholding the special permit for seven thirty-five Maine is been granted. So it's up to the, I believe it's been it's, it's up to the other, to the other person if they want to go forward. So in any case, that's one more step towards getting that lot developed. It's now just a lot full of weeds. Two things, two bureaucratic thing or administrative things which uh kind of slipped through the cracks. One is a budget narrative, which I missed. I needed to get that to Jim Cafarella. A week ago, I will be working on that, and then there's an annual report to the Town Manager from the, a department report. And uh, we need to get access to Brian's files. Uh, Brian and Sally uh communicated about this last week, and I gotta go from Brian today, and we need to get to his files in order to get his previous reports, so that's in the works. And then.
Did you speak with Brian? He's setting up that connection?
Uh, it's, it's no longer in Brian's control. Uh, he no longer has an account, so I've reached out to um.
Records?
To Matt Griffin, who is the IT person for the town, to um see if we can get access to that. Uh, we should be able to. It's just a question of permissions. Um, and then, I'm losing track of time. Pardon me. Oh, it's only nine-ten. We're good, seven-ten. So in terms of Section Three Five Five, um, I have, I sent off a memo to the um, I think, I hope I sent you all a copy of that memo. I sent off a memo to the ZBA.
Check.
Which recorded our um discussion of it last month and uh planned language from uh that the Town Council suggested to bring it into um con- agreement with previous practice. Um, so I believe that is going to be on the ZBA's um agenda for next week, I think.
We're gonna, we're gonna get feedback from them, hopefully?
Well, we're gonna get, we're, hopefully, they will, they will, uh, I mean, the key is, we want the language to be understandable. I mean, we've set the policy, and, and so the idea, and the language should, they should be able to read that and interpret it the same way that we want them to.
Right, right. I, I just wanna, I'm, I'm kind of would like to get uh feedback. I, I'd like to get whether they like it. Uh, I'd like to know what, what their, what their opinion of it is.
Well, they, their opinion will be, can they understand the language as we have suggested? Will they come to the same conclusion as to what the policy is when they read the language? Um, they don't, they, they're, because they're an adjudicatory board, they don't really have an opinion on the policy.
Right.
They really just say um, if we read this language, do we understand it the same way that you do?
And are we, are we, are we making the, the subtle change that between the variance and the special permit? Is that, is that change happening, or is it just gonna be the same as it was before?
We are hopefully um writing into the bylaws the existing practice.
Okay.
Is to accord people um special permits in those, in for one and two family buildings. Uh, as, has essentially been the, the practice for the last couple decades, so that's, that's the hope of the language. And the, the feedback we'll get from the ZBA will be either that they understand that language to give a, to, to result in that policy, or they still find it unclear, but.
Nick, it's on the agenda for February sixteenth.
Oh, wait, okay.
Board of Appeals meetings, so that's attendable.
Okay, so that's, uh, I would imagine that, you know, oh, well, I don't know, it's, it's, we'll see whether, if they, if they find the language still isn't giving them their correct guidance, then we'll do a loop around with legal.
Right.
Um, there is a very hard deadline this year for um motions. The motions have to be in their final form by early March. Uh, Town Manager is putting her foot down, so uh she would like things to go through legal and essentially be in their final form by early March. So we have, I think, one or two meetings prior to that deadline, so we'll have to vote in our um our motions before then. And I just wanna have a, a shout out to Kurt Spring, who is joining us. Kurt, you wanna announce your presence? Make yourself official?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Um, oh, and the last thing, which I've almost forgot, is that the Housing Production Plan has uh, has passed out of toddler age and is approaching five years, which means that we need to renew it. So uh, the Housing Production Plan is five years old in two thousand and twenty-four. And that is, we need to be, we need to have one uh approved by the DHCD in order to be able to eligible to apply or to be eligible for safe harbor.
Right.
So that is something that the Planning Board uh spent some good deal of effort on with the last Housing Production Plan, so I imagine we will also be working with the Select Board. It's nominally a Select Board effort, but obviously, it has a lot to do with our working, so.
You have a timeline on that project? When it's due?
It's due, uh, I think, I'm, I'm trying to remember. I think it's February of next year.
So it expires in two thousand and twenty-four in February?
Expires in two thousand and twenty-four. The hope is that it'll be a much lighter lift than last time. Uh, we just have to, and so there is, there was a discussion of it at the Select Board last night in terms of the resources that would be made available, whether or not we need to hire a consultant to do that.
Okay.
And I think that we'll just be having ongoing conversations. Uh, I know I've already spoken with the Town Manager, Beth Rudolph, about our um involvement in that um prior to last night's Select Board meeting, so we will. That just came up in discussion, so we'll, we'll be, we'll be working on that as well.
Great, great.
Um, so I think that's all I've got for updates. Um, and why don't we jump into, we do have a uh, a public hearing, so why don't we um take the approval of minutes and why don't we um move that to another time today? Let's get that, to that tonight, but um just to keep going. Um, so uh, I think we need to, why don't we vote to, to open the um continued public hearing on the Rocky Ledge subdivision? I'll take a roll call vote on that. Uh, Nick Rosetos.
Aye.
There are so many people here, I can't keep track of you all. Um, Sally Dale.
Aye.
Eicheng.
Aye.
Uh, Kurt Spring.
Aye.
And Dab says aye as well. So um, welcome back, everyone. This is a um continuation of our subdivision hearing. Um, last time, uh, we discussed um consultants to look at the um storm wa- the various uh water management on the lot. Whoops. And uh, we didn't ex- excuse me, we didn't expect that to be completed by today, but we did want to open this today up for continued public hearing, and then an update on what's happening with the um consultants, so. Why don't I first open it up to people who would like to make a comment on uh to the public? So if anyone in the public uh in the neighborhood is here this evening and would like to make con- a comment on uh projects, uh, please raise your hand. A lot of people here. Okay, are there any people here who are interested, who are here for this hearing?
Uh, just the, the applicant, uh, Mr. Chairman, and myself and our, our team are, are here, but uh, yeah.
Okay.
You were asking, but yeah.
Yeah, no, I see you folks. Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, I was just uh still, still surprised we aren't getting more public uh input, but maybe it's just because everyone is, has, is satisfied. So why don't we um, why don't we move on to discussion of the the state of the uh Fifty D Tree um consultant? And uh, Brian Menter, do you wanna bring us up to date on that?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Weston Sampson has been brought on as the peer review consultant. Um, they've been, the town has set up the account that the applicant was quick to provide the check and the, the fee amount. Um, so Weston Sampson's been directed to begin their peer review. Believe that started last, that direction was given last week um with all the the account set up, so they're, they are ready, they are in the process of beginning their review. Um, I believe they said that it would take a max of four weeks to complete everything. Um, so that's, that's where we're at.
Okay, and that's um, and uh, Mr. Vaughn, is that, is that um your understanding as well?
Uh, yes, it is, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think the scope is uh consistent with what had been discussed and presented before in terms of, you know, stormwater, sewer and water uh items, so they are, are doing that, and our understanding is that uh to Brian's point, it's to be completed by the beginning of March, so um unless the board felt otherwise, you know, we thought it would make sense to continue to, the hearing. Ultimately, it would date certain in March that would give us some time to perhaps digest what comes forward from Weston and Sampson, and then be able to have a better discussion with the board about any plan changes, so uh certainly understand that there were some comments raised at the, at the prior meeting that, you know, ultimately will reflect in any plan revisions. I know that uh uh through you to the uh, I believe, Board Member Ai Ching, for example, had questions just about native plants uh wanting to see some of those um incorporated and um some other notes that we had as well from the, the meeting, but rather than coming in uh iteratively with different plan revisions, we thought it best to digest what Weston and Sampson might have, um, and then put a plan together to be back to the board.
Okay, uh, that sounds good, uh, and uh I feel awkward saying this, because I have an odd sounding name, but it's Eicheng.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Eicheng.
Okay. Apology.
No, that's, those of us with, with, with odd names sometimes, uh, yeah. Uh, so let, the, the concern that I have, and I know we, we discussed this in email a little bit, is that I think we're running up against the ninety days. Uh, so we have ninety days to rave at this decision, and I believe that it's right up at the beginning of March, so I think uh, it would be useful to ex- ask for an extension of, of a few weeks, just so that we can get all of the peer review in and the responses, so that there isn't, so we have enough time, so um unfortunately, I, I don't have the exact date in front of me. Um, and I apologize for that, but.
Dab, it's ninety days from what day?
It would be the day that it was uh stamped on the uh, that it was received.
As a, as a.
I, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm pretty sure. It, it on, on or about March fourteenth would be the.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Thank you.
It was filed, I believe, on December fourteenth, so.
So if we could ask, so I, I'm thinking that we could have, so if it's four, if it's four weeks for Weston and Sampson, um, that takes us to maybe to, and that was starting last week, I don't know, let's.
We have a three-seven meeting, March seven.
Three-seven meeting, and, but I would like to be able to have a little bit of padding.
Right.
Um, so if we could just ask for an extension, which I don't think we would need all the way up, say to um how many days are there in March this year?
Well, the next March meeting is on March twenty-one.
Yeah, so if we could have an extension to the twenty-eighth, just to allow us a little bit of flexibility in scheduling, if that's okay with you folks?
Yeah, I think that gives us time too for getting back the report um and to be able to dig in and make any changes before we uh come back to you guys.
Okay, so why don't we, uh, so um, I don't know what the formal requirements are to ask for an extension. I will um go and talk to legal and see what needs to be done with that.
Yeah, we, we, we can, what, I, I'm pretty sure it would be a letter from us, just uh, uh, requesting and acknowledging the uh, extension of any statutory timeframe for the board to act until March twenty-eighth.
Okay, and then why don't we put you folks on the um, on the seventh, just so that that's four weeks from now? Is that too early for you, or would you prefer to come on the um, we have a meeting on the seventh, and we have a meeting on the uh.
Twenty-first.
The twenty-first, so would you prefer us to put you on the twenty-first or the seventh?
Let's, let's try for the seventh, and it will probably not have any updates yet from the report. But we'll be able to discuss it, and then hopefully, we can come back on the second meeting in March with all the changes um completed.
Okay, so why don't we um continue, I think, unless, are there any, is there anything uh that we need to discuss this evening? I think we're done, but anything, any, any people who wish to make a comment in the public? And I don't see anyone, so um so why don't we uh continue the hearing for the Rocky Ledge subdivision until March seventh at seven fifteen? And let's get a, like, let's just vote, just to make, just in case, um we need a town planner to tell us what all the rules are. Seven fifteen PM, uh, Kurt.
Aye.
Sally.
Aye.
Uh, Eicheng.
Aye.
Uh, Nick.
Muted.
Aye.
Thank you, and Dab says aye as well, so thank you all very much, and uh we will see you folks on March seventh.
Great, thank you very much, and uh, thank you also, uh, Brian Menter, for your assistance, just coordinating the, the peer review and all that. Appreciate that.
Yeah, welcome.
Thanks, Brian. Thanks, everybody.
Um, okay, so um, Eicheng, if you could pop up the agenda, I've already forgotten where we are on. Okay, so we are um, we're actually a little early. So why don't we go back to um approval of minutes? Since we skipped over that, and so we've got minutes for January twenty-fourth of two thousand and twenty-three. Are there any um edits or amendments?
I have one on page two.
Okay.
In the um, under future zoning articles, on the third bullet, um, it's two sentences, and in the second sentence, borders should be spelled with an A. It's a different meaning.
Ah, yes. And if you would be so kind as to pass that on to Nancy?
I will, and otherwise Nancy, great job in the minutes.
Yes, thank you, Nancy. Uh, any other um comments or corrections? If not, then I would welcome a um motion to approve the then, thank you, Eicheng, to approve the minutes for Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, roll caller, please. Uh, Kurt.
Aye.
Sally.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Eicheng.
Aye.
And Dab says aye as well. Thank you much. So um, we are in the unusual position of having um extra time before our next um agenda item. We have.
Yeah, do we have time for me to ask you questions about your updates?
Why don't we do that? I wanna make sure that everyone who is planning on being here at seven forty-five is, has that chance, so go ahead.
Right, I don't know what time it is right now. Um, so let's see, um uh my question was, um, oh, so the waterfield lot, that was my question. I had to go throughout, down through my notes. Um, so the Planning Board will be the Special Permit Granting Authority, um, which is uh indication that it is not coming in as a forty-B? Is that?
That is my, I, that is my understanding.
And so what is it coming in as? Just a special permit?
Yeah, it would be coming in as a special permit.
A PUD special permit, or?
Uh.
Because of the height?
Steps of my ignorance right now. Um, I believe that would be the case.
Okay, is the PUD special permit because of the height?
Okay, now there, uh, I, I don't know the exactly why, sorry.
Okay, no, 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 that's okay. We'll um okay, I'll see if I can figure that out. I'm just really curious, um, because there was like two ways that the developer could present the permit application to the town, the two conditions.
We can very quickly, is there, is there another, while I go and look at the?
Yeah, yeah, let me see if there was another one. Um oh, on seven thirty-five May, I wrote down that you said it's been okayed in court, now it's up to the other person. Who's, what, what does that mean?
It means that, so someone appealed the decision. The court has found for the town and for the, for the ZBA in this case. And so the other party, I, I think there might yet still be another avenue for appeal.
Oh, I see. We have to learn if they're okay with that or wanna move on with.
Decide that um, they are not interested. They decide that um they are not interested or that they want to continue that.
So if it's their furthers, further appeals, I see, okay. Great, thank you, and then um. Yeah, those were my question, so if we have to get something to to legal by the tenth, we are gonna spend our meeting time on the two, on the twenty first and the seventh, getting that language together, right?
Yeah, so the 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 things that we have before us, and they're actually nicely documented in the minutes that we just uh uh are the section three, five, five, the um change in the lot width requirement for R D A. And um I believe those are the only two.
The other one that we were looking at was this question of sixty versus fifty nine or sixty two um with the A D U. Um.
That's, that's, okay, so that's something which which I don't think this board is aware of, which, yeah, so that, so.
Let's put that on the agenda for the twenty second.
Yeah, so that that we did, there was a A D working group meeting last, was it last Friday? Um, one of the things that's really strange about um how people are classified is that according to the state's definition of a person with a disability, you are disabled up through the age of fifty nine, but then you you magically aren't disabled at the age of sixty, you actually pass into another category, which is uh elderly person or a senior person. And so our A D U by law talks about these two populations. And they, it's, it talks about people with disabilities as defined by master of law, and it talks about people over the age of sixty two. And so we now have this gap between the ages of sixty and sixty two, where someone could be eligible to live in the A D U because of their classification as a person with a disability, they turn sixty and all of a sudden they are no longer eligible. And so this is just a bizarrenity, and this is something which um we had chosen the age of sixty two because it was midway between um the federal and the state definitions, and now I think what we need to do is come back and we need to remove that gap, because that was an unintentional gap, nobody, nobody appreciated, I certainly didn't appreciate that. The definition of of a person with a disability was was had a cap in the terms of how old you are.
So that seems to me to be clear enough to, in this short time, pull together by the tenth of March.
You are very optimistic, Sally.
Always.
I was, I was, I would think that since the original the original um motion or change to the bylaw still hasn't made its way through the A G's office. I would, I would not, I personally would like to wait until fall before we bring this up.
Oh, okay.
Just because I think is a little less confusing and uh.
Good, I got it.
Um, there are some other questions that legal had about the language, which um, I think we still, I thought we had clarified all the language with legal prior to that, but legal came up with some more questions, which I think we're going to have to sit down and figure out exactly what the consequences are or what their concerns are. Um, so any other?
That's great, thank you for that.
Uh, we still have ten minutes. I'm going to um.
Can we talk about the M pick for ten minutes?
Well, the M pick is later on this evening, um, we can talk about, what would you like to discuss about the M pick?
Well, um, just where we are with it and the fact that we posted the um volunteer position again, because we got um not as much response the first time we posted it as we want, and I know that there's at least one person who's interested in applying, but it was necessary to repost it so that everybody could apply. Um, so that's the status of that, right?
Yes, yes, thank you, um, that is the status. Um, so we are, we are um, anyone who wish to apply, please do so, um, it is now, there is a, there's a posting up on the town's website. And we are holding it open, I think, for as long as we need to in order to get our our requisite number, um, it's been a really interesting discussion that we've been having there.
So, so is anyone on there now?
Yes, yes, we have, um, we have three members who are um one person who's been there for, who who should, who was at the first meeting and has been able to make the second two meetings, uh. Oh, I'm gonna get Eric Damari, Damari, I think his last name.
Rich Row, Rich Rowan is on it, and I remember Rich has a notation of the other members.
Yeah, Rich is on it, and um we have a a youth representative um who's been with us, and then um we had a couple of people, or at least one person who had other commitments and wasn't able to make it, so it's a pretty small team right now.
And then we have one person who's expressed interest.
Yeah, and we have one person who showed up at our last meeting who has expressed interest and is with us this evening, as a matter of fact.
Do we know who those other people are other than Rich?
I can't remember, it's terrible.
Uh, the other, well, I, to be honest, the youth representative, I don't know, because they're under the age of seventeen or eighteen, I don't know how public I can be with their.
Okay, sure.
I just don't, it's quite possible I can say their name, but I don't know what the rules are.
Okay.
Um, and then uh Eric Damare, I think is his last name, is the other person who was with us for the first one. And uh the the person who's interested, I will wait until they put in an actual um application.
Are they sort of, are they up and running? I mean, do they, do they?
They've had three meetings and they're discussing their process, and it's.
Are they gonna share with, share that with us, I mean, as a, as a, as a group in the, in the planning board?
Yeah, so so Sally and I have been there, um, sort of leading the discussion. Um, and the idea is that they will they're trying to understand which of the different strategies to focus on in terms of how to figure out which ones. Uh, what are the metrics used?
Right.
How to reach out to these other, to the groups that are named as being responsible parties. Um, so it's, it's, you know, understanding the the structure of town government, understanding how different things fit together, um, and trying to i- identify, you know, how do, how do you figure out which ones are the most important ones to go for, which ones do you start off? So I think that one of the things that we had wanted was that for this group to be pretty independent of the planning board, because we really want them not to think that they are they need to tell us what we want to hear, we want them to be seen as an independent group, so I think I think that maybe in a few months, when there's been enough um work that they feel confident in terms of where they're going, they would come.
Who's the chair? Uh, 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 are you, are you serving as chair?
There really isn't a chair, there's a facilitator, so I'm serving as the facilitator, originally the um, the town planner was was to be the facilitator for this group.
Oh, right, yeah.
So the the group could create its own structure, um, they could decide whether they wanted a chair or how they wanted to do it. Um, so right now, it's essentially, um, I'm facilitating.
I mean, it'll, it'll be exciting to to hear some, some news, I mean, to what what they're, what they're doing.
Well, oh, Peter Casey has got his hand raised.
Um, okay, Peter Casey. I do not see it.
Well, then I'm glad I did.
As I don't even see Peter Casey on here. There he is, Peter Casey.
Mister Casey.
All right, done, you, Eric, okay, thank you, Mister Chairman of the Board. For somebody who's not been in one of these meetings in a long time, can you just tell me what M pick is so that I know what you're talking about?
It's the master.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good point, we should, we should spell that out on the minutes, probably.
Yeah, so that is, that is, it's the.
Or on the, not in the minutes, on the agenda, we should spell it out.
So let me, let me, so, so Mister Casey, that's called the ma, it's called the Master Plan Implementation Committee. It's an advisory committee to the planning board, which is um charting how the town is progressing towards fulfilling its visions in the comprehensive master plan that the town, that the planning board and the select board, well, it wasn't, it was the planning board which adopted a couple of years ago, so.
And and how mu- how many volunteers are you looking for for this?
Yeah, we're looking for a total of, I think we're, we're at eight, eight people. And so the idea originally was that there are four main themes of the master plan. Um, there is building community, balancing preservation with development, um, a sustainable. I'm, I'm losing it, um, there are.
Connecting people in places.
Connecting people in places and sustainable development in government. The idea was we wanted to have two people who kind of represented each of those core themes. Not necessarily that's all they would do, but they would take specific, you know, special interest in those. And the idea is to um, to try to figure out where the town is in terms of how it, where it is relative to getting its vision, to seeing that vision through, what sort of strategies are out there, what everyone in town is already, a lot of people, a lot of um, boards and committees already working towards those goals. But, you know, dropping in, seeing what they're doing, and just charting the progress is something that uh, we thought was really important, um, we had a lot of community input in putting together the the comprehensive master plan. And so um, if you are interested, uh, drop a line to planningboard@winchester.us and I can point you at the uh at the uh volunteer application form, right?
Thank you, that answers my question, it gives me enough to kind of tool around on the town website and look around for it, so.
Yeah, or if you, if that's too frustrating, just drop us a line.
On the planning board, on the planning board page of the town website, there is a link to master plan. And the master plan includes the plan itself and the, and the action plan that is the
I have seen.
Second volume, and those act, that action plan is where those sixty five strategies are um documented and described in further detail, and there's sub-strategies and all kinds of great town planning type of thinking. Many of those, as Deab just said, are already underway to the credit of the volunteers on all the other committees in town. And that's one of the things that the Master Plan Implementation Committee would be able to track and celebrate and encourage and create synthesis and make it happen.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for the question. Um, at this point, I think we're close enough to seven forty five, that why don't we open up our um review of the Z B A petitions? Um, so our first one is for three sixteen Highland Ave. And um is there anyone here who would like to speak on that? Is there, is the, any member, is a proponent here this evening?
He, Peter Baldwin, Deab raised his hand.
Hi, thank you, uh, Peter Baldwin, uh.
Yeah, I am in a butter.
Okay.
And uh, I'm looking at the plan and the pictures of the plan, and one of the uh comments is the view from twenty five Mason Street, I am twenty five Mason Street, I would like to all share my screen and offer you a real view of twenty five.
Mister Baldwin, Mister Baldwin, thank you, we will, we will get to your comments in just a bit, why don't we first? Give a, um, let's, let's go over this, so this is a, um, if you could move back to the top each, please, just so we can read off what this petition is for. Okay, so this, I keep losing that, so this is for a um a site plan review for uh three sixteen Highland Ave in order to change the grade of more than five hundred square feet by more than six percent. And if you could scroll down to one of the um I think the first map. Yeah, and and Brian Manter, um, Assistant Town Engineer, could you lead us through maybe what's going on on this site? For those of us who had a hard time reading the blueprints.
Apparently, thank you, I'd be happy to. Um, so this project, um, first off, has a peril parallel path with conservation commissions, so when the engineering department is conducting their review, um, we're doing a parallel with, in in mind with what conservation want would be looking for as well. So the majority of this work is really, the two biggest parts of this work is to remove an existing retaining wall and to regrade. Yep, yep, that's good, um. Yeah, so the retain wall is yep, we are kind of right in that area, and um it's along the property line, it's a large retaining wall. The other aspect, the other major aspect of this is to regrade that area behind the retaining wall towards the property line to replicate or try to replicate as close to the original topography of the land. And then the other small little part of this project is going to build a s- a small retain wall as well, so those are like the big components of this project from, from our review. Um, this does not require stormwater management review under our regulations, there's not an increase of impervious surface. Um, just go back to my notes here. Um, but we do have a few comments regarding this application um with submission. So the, the high level things are um, that the applicant will require a fill permit from the Winchester Health Department before any materials brought to the site. Um, that grading is is very important, and that the applicant is to hire surveyor to stake out the proposed grade elevations to ensure that the, what's proposed is actually constructed properly. Um, and that their engineers to certify after the work is that the project was done in, in, in compliance with the design. Um, other lo- higher level kind of comments are that, you know, what they're proposing to do is going to change runoff characteristics, however, it's unclear how these, these changes will impact um of butters at lower elevations, so, yep, the engineering department uh will request that the applicant provide a narrative and explain how the changes um that they're proposing is not going to adversely impact the butters. And if they, if it's deemed that these changes could potentially add um impact downstream of butters, that they would update the design to offset and mitigate those potential. And that tho- the, these, these um um, conditions would be um, built into the order of conditions and have to, the engineering department would have to be satisfied with the responses prior to the issuance of a, any building.
Thank you, and and how much, you said, you mentioned that this is sort of overlapping with the Concom?
Correct.
So have you, has, does this memo incorporate any comments for the Concom or?
Yes, everything in here is in line with what the com, with the Concom, the memo was written to Z B A and Concom at the same time.
And and the Concom will come in with their own recommendations, or are you?
Yeah, I mean, con- conservation, uh, you know, looks at the projects with a different lens than the engineering department, so they may have additional comments for the applicants. Um, and requirements that the applicant will need to address, and they would do that, their mechanism would be through their, their order of conditions, that would be part of their order of conditions.
Okay. Um, thank you, are there any, any questions or comments, excuse me, from the board of of uh Brian or just on your own?
I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
So Brian, you mentioned on your memo that um as outlined in section five point three and five point four, um, because there's not an increase in impervious surface, that it does not trigger stormwater management as outlined in those sections. But then on page two, under general findings number nine, you make a statement that sounds like it's contradictory to that, but maybe it doesn't relate to four point five point three and five point four, I honestly don't know. But I do think that runoff from this site could be a problem, and I think it's a ma, it's a topic of considerable concern and mitigation and discussion.
Absolutely, my understanding of those sections is that it's to offset runoff, so you know, due to increases of impervious surface, you know, as defined as a small project. So under those regulations, we're thinking about making sure that there's no increase in rate and volume from the site due to increase of impervious surface, however, you, you know, the changing of the grades, one could argue that runoff character six would change, and right now. the applicant hasn't provided any information as to what that change could be. And the potential impact to downstream of butters. So it, they, they would need to flesh that out a little further before, um, you know, a building permit be issued.
Right. So, uh, you had recommended that they provide a narrative on how the runoff from the work will not adversely impact butters. I feel like a narrative would be not enough, maybe? That what I'd rather have is that, um, uh, uh, civil engineer provide, um, their best analysis. I would think the conservation commission would want this too. Their best analysis based on the three point, three to one slope that's proposed um, as to where exactly water will go. Not just a narrative, but like documented and plans, analysis. However, a civil engineer would communicate their satisfaction. Um, DAB, I don't know if that's a peer review situation or what, but I just, I know that the, the, the property has lost a lot of trees over the last number of years. I honestly don't know how long it's been that way, but runoff um, in deforested slopes is a big concern across town. And so I would just like to know that, um, when this slope is recreated um, and it's seeded, um, that and, and, and even during construction, that it's proposed that there be, uh, uh, erosion control measures.
Those are, I think that you're seeing those right now, Sally.
Yeah, right. Um, but once this regrading to a three to one slope is done, I noticed in the seed mix and in the planting notes that it will take two years for the seed mix to fully establish the bank. Um, and being as concerned as I am about erosion control in this area, um, I would like to propose that at a one year from installation of seeding and a two-year installation of seeding that, um, this bank be, um, inspected for erosion. Um, and that it be mitigated if it's eroding at either one or two years. Cause I just I'm really worried about grass growing on a three to one slope as the guarantee that things will not wash away. So, um, that was one thing I said, and then I want to say, and then I just had a couple of questions. Um, on about, about your memo, but I can stop there if you.
Let's just see if there are any other comments from the board. Just mindful of the time here.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody from the board have any comments they want to make?
Uh, the only thing I would say, I, I think, well, first of all, Sally, you're on a roll. I would let you keep going, but I, I think, uh, I, I would share Sally's just concerned that you know, I, I don't know exactly, you know, the code references that Brian had in his, in his memo, but it does strike me that, that runoff should be a consideration here. And I'm not sure the right technical way to ensure that it's mitigated correctly and what we can do within the, the, the code, but that certainly does strike me as a concern here, given, you know, the grade change. And, and the fact that we have a butters, you know, right behind it.
Okay, Brian, do you want to respond to that in terms of?
Yeah, no, I, that's all very good feedback, you know, and I think that, um, narrative is not the right term. Um, and that analysis would be a better, a better, um, term to use and that we would get a more in-depth response from the applicant if the analysis was conducted rather than a narrative, a, a narrative explaining how they would manage it. So I, I think, I think that's good feedback.
And, and, and to, and to what Sally was saying about, um, sort of check-ins over time, is that something that, that is normally part of a an erosion control plan is that they have to show that their mitigation efforts are working until the, the, the permanent erosion control, namely the, the grasses take root and hold. Do they?
Yeah, that's an excellent comment. That's something also that I'd need to, I, I'd like to update my memo to include. Um, but you know, in addition, conservation has a very good eye for that stuff as well. So they may have, um, other opinions on that, but it's, it's a very good point that Sally makes regarding the establishment of the grass on an aggressive slope um, over time and that there's the potential for runoff and causing erosion. So that's a, that's a very good point.
I, I just had a comment of, I was at the historical commission meeting yes, yesterday evening. And this came up and one of the points that was brought up was that the wall that was built was not according to code. It was kind of done without permission. And that the condition of the wall is, uh, is not good. Uh, I, I don't know, um, what the specifics are about it. Um, but, uh, there, there was a, uh, a discussion that it may be a, uh, a danger and that.
It is a danger. May I show you a picture?
Uh, hold on one more second, Mr. Baldwin.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was my point. Um, and, and I, you know, and, and, and I guess the other point is um, that I don't have a clear sense of what a good grade is, but it, it did seem from earlier discussion that they would be attempting to restore the original grade, which strikes me as a, uh, as, as a, as a good end to, to, uh, to the situation. That's it for me for now.
Okay, um, E Ching, did you have any comments you wanted to make? You are muted.
Uh, not so much. I, I'm having trouble understanding a little bit why this, this work. And, um, and is it to sort of make it, make that area a usable lawn situation and restore that area to, to be, um, habitable in some ways. Uh, is that, is that the point? I'm, I'm just kind of kind of understand, not understanding why this.
DAB, I think it would be helpful if there's an, a representative of the property here to give a history of the property. Um, I can tell you what I understand about it, but um, one of my comments, um, regarding Brian's memo is, um, that the plans that were shown do not show um, property lines and wetland lines for significantly abutting properties. And, um, the land that loops behind this site belongs to three fourteen Highland, who I believe is here. And the land behind that belongs to twenty-five Mason, who I believe is here. And, um, th, this land was also three fourteen and sixteen. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but historically this was one house and was divided into two that have a common wall. And there's significant land associated with each property. And you can see on the screen display that three fourteen's land wraps behind, um.
So I, I don't know that we can.
But all I'm saying is that the reason this property is so disturbed is because there's been considerable, yes, if you zoom in, that's helpful. There's been considerable activity to Nick's question on this land over a period of time that I don't know. Um, but I think to E Ching's question, it's to stabilize what is a really kind of unfortunate situation right now. And I guess I leave that as a question and that's it.
Yeah, with, with, without a proponent here actually speaking for the property owner, it's, it's, I don't want to us to try to surmise why they're doing what they're doing. Um, it does seem though that they are taking, they are increasing the grade by removing the wall and regrading. So I think it's not to obtain a more usable lot. Um, but I, what I would, what I would ask is what other runoff mitigations could be done here in addition to grass? Um, shrubs, trees, something like that, which might stabilize a steep slope. Um, so if the board is um, I would like to get Mr. Baldwin in here. He's been patient. Um, Mr. Baldwin, you are.
May I share my screen?
Um, you are in a butter. Can you tell us exactly?
I'm in a butter. May I share my screen?
Yes, could you please identify, I'm sorry, where?
Twenty-five Mason, twenty-five Mason.
Okay. Uh, I would have, hold on one second. I'm trying to find you on this list. There we go. Okay, you should be able to share your screen.
Okay, I tried it once. Here we go again. Share my screen. Okay, I'll share this one. You can see that?
We see a, a screen that says zoom on it.
Okay, this is the before and after picture. And this is what I look at. This is the view. Hardly what's presented in the plan.
Mr. Baldwin, could you please make that larger? We're having a hard time seeing it.
View, zoom.
Maybe make your entire window take over the whole screen.
Okay, deal. There you go.
Thank you.
You know, well, I, I agree with the plan. First of all, let me say, I agree with the plan as proposed, okay? But I do think it's fair with all this conversation to actually represent a better view, more, more representative view of, of my view from twenty-five. You see the wall, it's concrete blocks they use on the highway and it's not straight, it's dangerous. And we all agree it should come down. What it looked like before is this. Answering some of the questions about the runoff and the slope and, and the like. That's the before and after kind of shot. And I'd like to make these as part of the record.
Could you please email those to, uh, planningboard@winchester.us?
Yes, I can.
And, and so, uh, what's, obviously you, when was the, um?
This one was taken in twenty fifteen. This is a seven or eight year problem that the neighbor at twenty-five Mason Street's been living with.
So this, this is a, a fairly new wall.
This one is, I'll say, three years or so in the making. It's taken place over a period of time. And he built it on Ruben's property. He built it on three fourteen's property. And so there was a dispute. Ruben can comment on that if he'd like, but, but the, the wall has to come down. And the plan says the wall has to come down. We all agree with that.
Is, is this the, is the, the current owner of, um, this property, is that the same owner who put the wall up or is that a new owner?
Well, the wall was put up by Bill Gately, husband of Virginia Hung. Unfortunately, Bill passed away and left Virginia with a mess.
Okay.
And may I ask, um, DAB, if, if the, um, person who built this wall did so with the knowledge of the engineering department?
He didn't, I don't think.
Engineering, do you know?
So I don't know, that was, is before my time.
It's a do it yourself project here. He didn't die.
Okay, so um, I, I think this is a un, unfortunate looking wall.
This would have looked like before. You can see the rubble there, but it's, you know, you can see the slope.
Yeah.
There were more trees then, of course. So I mean, that's a good representation of what it was.
And, and your concern coming before us tonight is, is just to?
Only to make these pictures part of the record.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Baldwin, are you, are you in favor of the removal of this wall?
Yes.
Oh, and, and could you please, uh, make sure these get to the zoning board of appeals? I'll tell you what, if you send it to planning board at Winchester dot U S, we'll make sure the ZBA gets there. Cause I.
I'll work with Sally to get that done.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, um, or someone at the building department, uh.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought the pictures would be helpful for this conversation. I have another issue relative to the drainage. This is my property, uh, most recently in January, we had a big rainstorm. This is the morning after. And I'm going to zoom this in again. Where did you go? My zoom control. This is my property, twenty-five Mason. And you can see the backyard is a wetland, but, but you can see the water running off the hill.
So this is to my point that just because a particular chapter of what I guess is our town bylaw five, three and five, four says no impervious, no increase in impervious surface means no need to attend to runoff. This is very much a question of needing to attend to runoff as it impacts adjacent properties. I don't know.
Been worse than this. It's been.
I think it's, we have to be careful though, because the, the section of the bylaw is really only talking about one particular thing. I don't know, there's, there are other laws which come into play when you're talking about runoff. And I don't think that those are, those are.
Are they outside the zoning bylaw? They're more in the town bylaws?
I think there might even be state law. So I, I think we're wandering into an area where I don't know that we have the correct legal, um.
Well, so I would just state for the record that whether we have purview or not, I would recommend that whatever is done to stabilize and restore the bank that's currently held up by kind of a homemade and kind of scary looking wall. Whatever's done to stabilize and mitigate runoff to neighboring properties and so on is done with the approval of the conservation commission and the engineering department. Um, and a civil engineer. I know they have a landscape architect on the project, so they could provide some kind of certainty perhaps.
It is the right time to look at this. I mean, it's, it's, they're going to be in there doing all sorts of stuff anyway. So I mean, it's.
So I, I think that there's a, so I think there's a bound to what you can request out of a site plan review. I don't know what that level is, but I think there's a bounds to it. And certainly, um, if, you know, when you start getting into runoff on neighbors' property, you're going to have to say that this is, you know, what is the historical runoff? Was, did it exist prior to the wall being there? Is this a factor of the natural shape of the topography? So these are things that we can't get involved in, in part because we don't, it's not our purview for that, but also because it's a comp. Hydrology is a complex issue and I'm sure Brian could tell us all of the different complications we could, we could find ourselves in.
I do not want to slow down the project.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand. I just, so one of the things you, you might do, um, Mr. Baldwin, again, we are an advisory board to the ZBA. So, um, certainly by all means, uh, make sure that you appear before them with your concerns. And, uh, with us, they're the ones who have to make the decision on how to move forward on.
Them being who?
Um, so, uh, what do we have before the board? I think, I, I think we've gone over enough to come to some sort of a decision on this.
And the decision that we're asked to make is to comment and approve or not approve or endorse or not endorse the site plan. Is that right, DAB?
That is correct.
So what about if we decide not to take a vote? Because we want to see things documented before we vote.
Well, this is coming before the ZBA in a week's time, right? So I don't think we're going to have another bite at this apple. So if we have concerns, we should express them this evening. Um, I think it's up to the ZBA to take in, take our concerns into, into consideration with their recommendations. So.
Would, would it be appropriate to say, uh, for example, uh, recommend that, uh, certain, that trees be restored to the site? Um, as a, you know, to, to, to keep, uh, erosion from happening.
Well, I think, I think one of Brian's comments in his memo, I believe, addressed the plantings and the, and the lands and the fact that they were on the neighbor's property. So I think, I think it was maybe in part of what Brian.
Yeah.
To Nick's point, we could ask that one of our, um, concerns is what plantings will be installed other than grass to stabilize.
They've defined it in the plan.
As grass.
No.
No, there's, there's plantings in the plan.
Excuse me, Mr. Baldwin. This is now just a discussion within the board. Um, so the, the key here is that we don't know, I don't know what kind of plantings are appropriate to, to, to stabilize this better. So I would recommend that a landscape of someone. We, we have raised the question, are there additional, are there additional landscape mitigation efforts?
It, it's two things. It's one is to control erosion until the three to one slope is stabilized. And two, to Brian Manter's point about the plantings being on the adjacent property. And two, to Brian Manta's point about the plantings being on the adjacent property, number three fourteen, that hasn't even been discussed by us yet, so that's a separate topic, but the ones that are on the adjacent property do not stabilize the bank. Because they're not on the bank.
But they they do, they would soak up water, so they are.
Yeah, but they don't.
I feel like that's maybe a little bit out of our expertise, isn't it?
It is, yeah, I I think.
It's engineering and design review and conservation. I believe you're right, Kurt.
Yeah, so so the only thing we could say right here is we have concerns about stabilization of the slope until the the soil takes root.
The grass.
The grass, thank you. And Brian is gonna implement something like that in his memo. Um.
I do see that they're planning to put, if you look at the left screen here, they're planning to put vertical strips of soil stabilization fabric, which is recommended in the notes that I read.
So so again, we are, we are not, we are not experts in this, so if we were to go to our bylaws and figure out what it is that they under what, what are our, um?
Under site, is this a site plan review? Is that right?
Site plan review, yes.
So, um, under number four, it says provide adequate stormwater management consistent with the requirements of the subdivision rules, so we can, um,
Wait, wait.
Pull up the subdivision rules in consistent with that.
Wait, 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 we are doing, I can't believe that, what section are you looking at, please?
I'm looking at nine point five point seven, which is site print, site plan approval criteria or standards. Um, the the site plan approval can be granted once we determine that the plan meets the following standards. And standard number four.
Okay.
Nine point five point seven.
Well, that would be, um, I think that that we have to.
It's under special, it's under.
Yeah, no, I see it. I'm 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 looking at it, so, um. It's interesting. I hadn't realized that it actually pulled in the subdivision rules and regs here.
I know, I that's, I think this might be the first time I realized that too. So we have to pull up the subdivision regs on the question of adequate stormwater management and other cons- and other utilities. And mostly it's the stormwater, and I would, I would want the Conservation Commission to take the lead on managing this, but on the other hand, we do have an obligation to manage.
All we have to do is say that it has to meet those regulations, and that it's up to engineering to determine whether they've met those.
Oh, that's helpful. Okay.
We don't have to, that's, it's essentially, engineering has to has to do it. I mean, they're gonna do that within, I mean, Brian has written the memo, he's, he's gotten our input on a few things. So I'm confident that that memo will
Great.
address that. Um, I think that the minimized volume of cut and fill. Uh, I don't, that's the, about the only thing, if it's being returned to its original.
Nine point five point seven.
Then I imagine that there will be some redistribution. Um, and there will be some removal of fill, but I don't think it's unreasonable. Yes.
Yeah, that's to be documented in the construction drawings.
And I I don't think any of the other ones.
I don't think so either.
Um, have an issue, so I I would say that there's not a lot here to.
Well, number four, I think we deserves further investigation, and I think your suggestion to ask engineering to look and, I mean, Brian, if you want to sit with you on this, I'd be happy to help, but to look at what the subdivision rules and regs say regarding stormwater management and other utilities. Functionality.
Yeah, I I think that's, Brian can incorporate that into his memo if you, you know, or just state that that has to be met. Um, and that again is, engineering is going to be looking at that in any case, so.
I did see in Brian's memo that he had other conditions, which I totally endorse.
Right, so I think, uh, so the the motion could read such as that we endorse, we vote to recommend endorsement of site plan review. Of site plan review.
Peter, do you want your hand to still be up?
No.
With the, um, additional s- conditions as expressed are now, um.
In our discussion.
Well, I think, yeah.
Be specific.
Yeah, I know, I'm actually thinking about the wording for bringing in Brian's memo. Um. Um, with the condition that the town, assistant town engineers' concerns are addressed.
The itching rule got blown away.
Got it blown out of the water here. Yecheng is too busy managing the zoom, she can't.
No, it's because I asked too many questions for.
Okay, so vote to recommend endorsement of the site plan re- of the site plan with the condition that the assistant town engineers' concerns are, I should say, the engineering department, sorry. Engineering department's concerns are addressed. That, um, there um. That nine point five point, whatever the heck that is.
It's nine point five point seven, paragraph four.
That nine point five point seven paragraph, or that's actually it's just nine point five point seven point four.
Good.
Of the zoning bylaw is met. And that um.
Well, do we, Yecheng mentioned something about restoring plantings or trees to the bank, um. Yecheng, do you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that was my comment.
Oh, maybe it was.
I think, and and to explore additional vegetative plantings, vegetative plantings. Whatever, plantings. To assist with erosion control. Okay, that's what I've got. Anything else you want to add to that? If not, I would welcome a motion to that.
I I want to make sure that runoff to adjacent properties, and I include in that adjacency both three fourteen and twenty five, so three fourteen Highland and twenty five Mason, that runoff to those properties be managed to the satisfaction of.
I think we're wandering into, I really don't want to go there, because.
We're probably limited to to what's allowable by code, right? I mean, I don't know.
Yes, good. I I just, I don't want to, I don't want to approve something that allows water to flood someone's backyard. That seems dumb.
But if, but the problem, Sally, is that if historically water has always flooded their backyard. Because we.
This is a chance to fix it.
But it is not, but if it's a historical thing, you know.
I trust their responsibility to fix it if it's been in existence for a hundred years, which I don't know if has been, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I don't.
No, it's not always been that way.
We're wandering into a.
Okay, so I would, I would ask the zoning board of appeals to investigate that question. They're very good at investigating things.
I don't feel, well.
I want this, I don't want the outcome to be that water continues to run to onto other people's properties. I thought that was a ba- uh, that was not prohibited in our town bylaws or something.
But I don't want the outcome for this applicant to not be able to get approval for this project either.
Oh, I know, I want him to get approval for the slope and the plantings and the stabilization and the removal of a dangerous wall.
I think so, the more, the more like onerous conditions and like third party you know, requirements you put in it, though, I think the like higher probability is someone withdraws their petition. I don't, I don't know, I'm just trying to be.
Or if the ZBA can just deny it.
True.
And and so, if I may, I think your comment about an analysis, um, will go a long way.
Oh, good.
Understanding that, I think, I think that's, and also to all the other board members' points. Hydrology is a very complicated thing, and just focusing just on this may be a mistake. There are other factors that go in to the hydraulics and the hydrology in and around this area.
Okay. So, Diab, read the motion again.
We vote to recommend endorsement of the site plan with the condition that the engineering department's concerns are addressed. That nine five seven four of the zoning bylaw is met. And that they they should explore additional vegetative plantings to assist in erosion control. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, please. Uh, Nick.
Aye.
Uh, Sally.
Aye.
Yecheng.
Aye.
Kurt.
Aye.
And Diab says aye as well. Thank you much. This was not the one that I thought we would be spending our time on. We have a lot more to go. Okay, um, let's move on now to the next one, which is, uh, 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 thank you, Mister Mister Baldwin, who's just left us. Um, so let's move on to the next one, which is, um. Nineteen. Okay, so, um. Let me, uh, so this is a, um, this is something that's new to this board, and I don't mean just the people on the board right now. This is a brand new thing. So, um. Oh, thank you, you brought it up. So this bylaw was designed to provide some relief to, um, owners of properties that have historic, that are deemed an historic or natural resource, where they wish to do some development, um, and in return for putting a conservation restriction on the original property, they would be able to create a non-conforming lot, which would allow them to get some financial help in terms of, um, creating to 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 help them with the preservation. So is there anyone here from the proponents? Um, just raise your hand. Say something.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, but who are you? There are so many of you out there.
Uh, I'm a Daniel Bellnapp. Uh, here, I'll I'll raise my hand.
Um, okay, thank you. Yeah, it's there's, it's hard for me to see everyone, so, okay. So why don't we, um, I let me try to get you, oh, there you are, okay. Hi, so why don't we go through this very quickly, um, so the section, there are a couple of concerns that, uh, there are some procedural concerns, just because this is the first time this board or any board has gone through this um, that I'll get to in a bit, and I know engineering has some concerns, so why don't we first uh, Yecheng, if you can scroll to that first, where, no, that's um. Yeah, maybe we should do four or five. Let's do that first, yes, let's do the zoning bylaw first. So the key here is that the planning board is on the hook for providing recommendations um, evaluating the appropriacy of design of any new structure. And this particular project in front of us does propose a structure. And whether or not, um, it's suitable for development. And there's also, what's required is also for the historical commission to come up with a, um, a condition, a, uh, a conservation restriction on the property, and we do have that in our packet. So to be clear, um, we have to recommend to the zoning board whether or not we believe this is an appropriate project. Um, and the next thing we have to, and, uh, I'm sorry, I'm losing it, um. That's pretty much we go, we have to look at the existing, we have to make sure that the conservation restriction meets what we think it should meet. Uh, we want to look at the layout of the lots to make sure that the construction of the new lot is appropriate, so that there's development that's possible on there. And whether or not that new construction is appropriate. And I think this, um, Mister Bellnapp, you've actually been working with the town for some time on this project. Am I correct on that?
Uh, yeah, that's correct. We've, um, we met with, uh, Brian Zekely, uh, when he was still on staff, uh, several times. And, um, the historic commission, uh, we've had our third meeting with them yesterday. Um, so we've sort of gone through the process in pretty good detail with them. Where they produced the Form B, which was sort of to establish that the, um, the existing structure had, uh, historic value that was sort of worth, um, preserving, and then also, uh, the, they wrote and kind of adopted the, uh, the conditions under which they would support, um, our section four point five, uh, application, and then they, and then yesterday, they, uh, reviewed our proposed project. Um, since the conditions included language about the, uh, historic appropriateness of um, the proposed, uh, the the proposed home that we were trying to build. And, uh, they were supportive in all those areas.
Okay, thank you. Um, now, normally Brian would have brought that up, given us that history, but you know it better than anyone here right now. Um, so why don't we look at the existing structure? Um, so what we have in front of us is the is the layout of the lot. Whoop, you just had it there, Yecheng.
Existing structure?
Yeah, I'm I'm at the existing, the, the.
Existing lot.
The existing lot, yeah, the one you just had. Um, showing, there we go, yeah, so this is the existing lot. It is a conforming lot for this area. And the houses on the left, the the only thing that's non-conforming, I believe, here is there's a side setback which is too small. Um, I think everything else on this lot is conforming. And if you go to the next page, you'll see that the lot is to be split essentially in half. Both of the lots would still have this correct area. They would still be conforming for this. Um. This, um, district, uh, the main nonconformity would be the frontage and the width. Um, the setbacks for the new property, I believe, are all conforming. Um, the setbacks for the existing structure would, they'd have the one eight point seven foot where it should be ten foot would remain. Um. So at this point, uh, and I want to point out, I believe that everything else about this is conforming. Um. At this point, I think, um, the town engineer has done some work or has looked at the, um, stormwater runoff, and and Brian, you want to come in and give us your your analysis of that?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, Mister Belknap and I have spoken several times regarding the the requirements of stormwater regulations in town, um, and I believe he understands the requirements, um, in town, and that's reflected in the application in information he's provided. Um. The engineering department is is beginning our, uh, a review, so we're in the very preliminary stages of um, the information Mister Belknap has provided. Um. Initial findings are that it's a very detailed and thorough system that they're proposing. Um, the model is very, has a lot um, is well thought out, and they've got a lot of aspects, and, um, so I, you know, I I applaud him and his team for their approach and trying to understand and navigate the challenges of stormwater management on the site. However, you know, we initial review, you know, we do have some initial concerns, you know, the site does have fairly shallow groundwater. Um, it's about three and a half feet down, which really limits some of the techniques and technologies that you can use to infiltrate and offset runoff and ground, um, runoff. You know, the applicant is proposing a pervious paver system or pervious pavement system, which um, works pretty well, but it requires a lot of maintenance. Um, more so than just an infiltration system, so, you know, the the long term functionality of this type of technology is really incumbent on owners continually maintaining that system. And, you know, it appears that the system is gonna be shared between two properties, um, two individual what, properties, and so I, in my experience in town, I haven't seen something like this before, a shared system between two private entities on private property. So that I think that, that, um, you know, we'd need to, we'd need to look at it a little bit more closely.
Um, Brian, do you mind if I, uh, interject? Just.
By all means.
Um, so the the driveway is, uh, is shared, so there will be some sort of, um, you know, cross easements for for access, but as far as the actual drainage systems, um, the engineer designed it in such a way that they actually do function independently. Um, so the maintenance would need to be shared because it's a shared driveway, but the basically the runoff, um, and, uh, you know, the roof drains that are being captured for uh, lot A are supposed to be handled on lot A, and, uh, same with with lot B. Um, so they do. Um, so they do, basically, according to the engineer, contain the necessary area to meet the infiltration requirements independently.
Okay. Well, thanks for letting me know. Um, take that under advisement, and as we continue our review, we'll look at it with that information.
Sounds good.
Okay. So I know, Brian, you, you haven't had a chance to really dig into this really deeply. One of, so why don't we, um, take a look at the is, or I can't, I can't, was there a rendering of the proposed? Well, we've got a, uh, not a rendering, but it's certainly elevations. Pretty typical. I note that the dormers are less than fifty percent. Which is good. So I open up to the board if they have any questions, and I'll get to a procedural issue after the board has a chance to ask any questions.
So, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. All right. Um, I, I think that this, uh, new bylaw is pretty exciting, um, in terms of how, helping us um, increase the number of units without, um, massive density, and it seems like a gentle density to me. Um, and from some of the plans that I saw of the, uh, budding lots, it, it definitely, so we are looking right now at Hancock nineteen here. Definitely some of the other lots are similar in size and some smaller even here. Um, so that division seems to me to be, um, in alignment with what's existing around it. And the, so I think one thing, Deap, I think one thing that's not conforming, they were saying is that this, because it's a two-family, that that lot size is actually too small. I didn't, I didn't know that that was a whole different dimensional requirement, but or
You're right. It's eleven thou- well, it needs to be eleven thousand square feet if it's a two-family.
Right, which is odd. Okay.
So, yeah, okay.
But, um, but overall, the, the, uh, project itself looks very conforming and in alignment with a lot of the, uh, architecture around it. Um, you know, it's the, the height is at thirty-five feet or so, you know, it's not, it's not like when, you know, some of the other developments that are like, you know, reaching the limits, right, at thirty-nine point nine or whatever it is. Um, so you know, overall, I think it's, it's a great thing for a town to be starting to do this. I think it really preserves, um, some of the smaller, uh, housing units, um, in town, um, and keeps that nature, that historic nature of it. Um, without, you know, and in adding, adding stuff without compromising that whole character of that street. I think it's great.
Uh, thank you. Just clarification, Mister Bellnapp. So the existing structure is still used as a two-family?
Correct.
And the new structure, will that be a single or a two-family?
The proposed structure is a single family.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Nick, I think you were, you were gonna say something.
Uh, I think it was just with regard to you think Rose.
And Nick, maybe while you're collecting your thoughts, I had one question, which is, um, and I don't know who, who knows the answer to this, but it, it mentions on this like open space requirement, like seventy percent. Like, to my peers in the planning board are more knowledgeable than, than me. I mean, does that mean seventy percent of the lot should not be covered by either structure or in this case pool, deck, garage, is that?
Yeah, there's a, let me go grab the definition.
I only ask, cause it, it looks like when you, I, I was surprised that it's meeting that, cause there's just so much going on here with all the driveway, all the garages, all the decks, and then the pool.
It's always
Asked, um, Brian this one before, and it's anything that's not obstructed above your head.
Okay.
Would totally be an open space.
Got it.
The, the open space definition is a, um, you'd be surprised at how easy it is to meet it, just because I'm, I'm gonna get to that definition as soon as I can find it.
That's okay. I mean, yeah, I, I don't wanna derail us, so then we're short on time. That, that what Yicheng said makes sense, um.
Can I just give you guys a quick way to think of this so you can remember it? It's, this is Richard Leeve.
Yeah.
Lot, lot, lot coverage and open space are kind of the inverse of each other. So basically lot coverage plus hardscape plus green space equals a hundred percent. If you follow me, in other words, open, if it says open space seventy, the equivalent is lot coverage is thirty. So the thir- the thirty percent of, of the lot coverage, the thirty-five percent of the hardscape and the thirty-five percent of the green space, in theory, anytime you see a plot plan from a cert- no, from a survey with all those calculations, the, those three numbers should add up to a hundred.
Got it. That makes sense, Richard. Okay.
So, so I'm looking at these numbers and it, they add up to, um, a hundred and forty.
No, you have to do the inverse. So you have to do the in, like, in other words, when it says open space is seventy-six point nine, mo- move the cur- yeah, that means lot coverage is twenty-three point one. So the twenty-three point one plus the twenty-four point six, plus the forty-seven point three just below that, that's what adds up to a hundred.
There's no lot coverage on this. I think that's
Right, uh, lot, lot coverage and open space are the inverse of each other.
I see.
So in other words, if, if op- if open space is seventy, then lot coverage is thirty. If open space is seventy-six, then lot coverage is twenty-four.
That's helpful, Richard. Thank you.
Okay, but tha- that, that's the only way I ca- I've been able to remember this for all these years. I just wanted to share that with you. All right, bye.
Thanks. I, I was just, I was getting caught up in the definition of green space, not, not
Oh, and, uh, Deap, I just wanna tell, warn you that it's a deep dive.
What you're about to ask is a deep dive.
No, 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 no. The, the analysis of definitions and the cross-reference of definitions in the table on the lower left corner of this.
Yes, it's a very deep dive. We don't wanna go there.
No, we don't wanna deep dive.
Yes, and we're VR eight thirty right now, so
Yicheng rule rises again.
Nick, I, I jumped in and you were
Yeah, no, I, you know, I don't know that I, um, I'm not sure that I have anything to add. Um, my, my set, my question was that the, that meets the conditions of the historic, uh, that the historic restriction in terms of the, the
As long as historic has signed off on this design, which I believe they have.
Okay.
So the question before us is, um, I guess it's not our question is, um, this, uh, let's go back to four or five two.
I have a, I have a question, a side question. Is this, is this, the new house gonna be lived in by the the owners?
I don't know. It need, it doesn't have to be. They could, they could rent it or sell it or whatever. It's a totally separate law.
Yeah, so I'm representing my, my parents are the owners of the, uh, property, and, uh, their intent is to, is to move into the home.
So that's, so it's, it's, it's kind of, um, designed around their wants and needs.
Correct.
Hence, hence the pool.
Yes.
Um, so looking at four, five, two, one. Uh, we wanna look at the appropriateness of the design in relation to the existing national historic resource. Um, how does the board feel about one? I think the consensus seems to be that the design is appropriate for the site and for the neighborhood.
I agree.
Okay, so
Anybody else?
I agree.
Okay. So we all agree to number one with appropriate language. Uh, number two, uh, is proposed development, where the lot layout and design constitute a suitable development for the neighborhood. I think the consensus is that it is.
Uh, I do have that agreement and, but the only thing I wanted to make is I am assuming that all the documentation of easements between these two lots will be totally to the satisfaction of all the real estate lawyers involved.
That is not our concern.
Okay, that's the first thing I thought of. It's like, oh my god, language.
I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm get, we, number two doesn't say anything about lawyers. So, um, okay, and then, uh, our recommendation for the granting or denial of the special permit, including recommendations for modifications, restrictions, requirements be imposed as conditions. So, um, let's move to the second part of that. Are there any modifications, restrictions, or requirements? Um, the only requirement that I would have is that the, um, given the, the hydrology of the site and the concerns ex- expressed about making sure, cause it has such a high water table, I wanna underline the fact that we want this to meet the, um, code to the satisfaction of, of the town engineer, which I think is gonna happen anyway. Cause you can't build if you don't do that. Are, are there any other concerns that the board has?
Now, I get, just since you mentioned that, Deap, but just to piggyback on that, I mean, I, I think this would probably factor into Brian's analysis. But again, it just, it feels like there's, now we're, we're taking this large lot, cutting it into two, adding another dwelling. So to me, like, additional garage, pool, and issues with hydrology on the site, I, I just, I would encourage Brian to be pretty candid about it, and that the app can be sensitive to, you know, making sure they're not over, um, you know, overdoing it. You know, relative to some of the drainage issues that Brian suggested, cause I, you know, this is on a slope, and I don't know if the downhill of butter is here, you know, to weigh in on their view on this, but, you know, it would be unfortunate if this created a major issue for the downhill of butter. I will, uh, say that we've, um, we've shared, uh, details of the design, uh, with the, with the downhill of butter, who are kind of most affected by this, uh, by the proposal. Um, and they've been, and they've been supportive. Um, they were willing to, uh, to sign a support letter, um, of, for this design. Part of the thing that we tried to explain is that the stormwater plan, it was, uh, created by our engineer, is trying to take as much of the stormwater as possible and basically direct it into this central, um, infiltration system. So theoretically should improve, you know, the runoff that flows into their property. That's, that's great to hear. Thank you.
Um, the one thing that, um, I am concerned about is the shared responsibility for keeping that central driveway maintained, um, because it is an important part of your um, stormwater management system. Or isn't, I don't know how important it is, but the fact that it's shared and it's in, it's a pervious surface. Is there some sort of an HOA or something that, that you could come up with to make sure that actually gets done?
I, uh, we haven't worked that out exactly, but I believe that that's most likely either that or, you know, maybe it's, it's basically like a maintenance agreement or something with, that, that is limited to just that, um, just the driveway, so that there's, you know, a small do, uh, that pays for, you know, I think when you do permeable pavers, you need to have it kind of vacuumed out, um, on some kind of, uh, interval to make sure that it, the water continues to, you know, be able to drain into it. So, uh, and, uh, are um, so yeah, there, there, I think will be something in place.
Okay, cause I'd like to, that would be my only, um, uh, what is the word we're looking for, um? Restriction or requirement as a condition would be to make sure that there is a, a, a written understanding of how that is going to be maintained. It sounds like you're already on top of, but I'd like to put that in. Anything else from the board?
I- if the other house does not wanna maintain the drainage system, are they, are they upstream or downstream the property? And would, uh, I'm just wondering if that would have an adverse impact, but, I mean, I, I guess at some point you just have to say.
If, if they both sign, if, if it's required, I mean, this would be something like, I don't, I don't know what the legal mechanism is, but they weren't binding upon them, and if they choose not to do it, then the other owner could sue them.
Yeah, but do you really wanna have that? I mean, to have an onerous, an onerous maintenance schedule and then, you know.
It's, it's, I mean, if, if we're concerned about making sure that this stormwater system works into the future, then even on any subdivision, you have an HOA which talks about maintenance of shared systems. So this is essentially a shared system, so we always have something in hand so that there is some legal instrument in case one of the, one of the people decides they don't wanna do their share, their responsibility.
But it seems like it's a burden to the, to the person, I mean, down the road to, uh, for assistance, it's very costly to maintain.
Well, then they shouldn't purchase the house.
Yeah, I was gonna ask Yicheng, as, as, as somebody with experience in the real estate industry, isn't that carried in, you think?
Yes, you, easements are very typical, and you just, um, you know, by law have to do it. And then if you don't, you, you put a lien on a property and then it goes, it carries with the property in. It's, 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 it's something that I don't think we should be concerned with.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there is a, um, so, so a couple of things have come up in procedural terms, and that is something that, again, cause this is so brand new to us. And so one of them is that I don't know where this stands in terms of a subdivision. Typically, when you, and I've, I've asked town council to weigh in on this, and unfortunately, I only asked them this evening, so, um, the question is, since this is a division of land, and normally if these were, it was a lot with two, um, the, the compliant you know, everything was compliant with each law, so we'd go through an A and R, and it would sign off and we'd go through with no problem. Since we are creating a new non-compliant lot, I just don't know what the, what the steps are legally to make sure that it goes through the right thing. So I think the board is in favor of this project. Um, but I reached out to legal to make sure we don't have to go through subdivision, and I apologize, Mister Bellnapp, at this coming up at this stage, but um, we've lost our town planner who would have answered that question for me.
So I, I've, I've spoken to, to Brian about it before he, uh, before he left, and also with the, um, building department, who I think checked in with, um, uh, council when we were putting, when they were putting together the, um, application requirements. And my understanding is that the basically the special permit needs to be approved and in place in order for us to then, um, file for the subdivision.
Okay.
So it's a kind of a second process that we would need to have the special permit approved in order to then apply for the, the A and R.
Okay, so let us, so, but thank you for that. Um, the other question I have is about easements, and I know that there's a there's a movement not to have easements, but I think an easement works in this case, cause I think it, it, it makes this doable. So I don't, I don't know what, whether that's just something I heard, um, but, um, it's just something I wanted to make sure the board knows is that there is an easement. Um, so we wanna make sure that, that we, we get this through. Um, we might have to do something different with the subdivision in order to get the easement through. Um, anyway, uh, so we have, um, I think we've got, um, we agree on number one, we agree on number two. Um, on number three, we're just going to, uh, ensure that the stormwater systems are work, um, are agreed to by a town engineer, and that there's a mutual agreement to handle the maintenance of the shared. It's called a driveway. And per- shared pervious driveway.
Well, it's maintenance of the shared driveway and stormwater management system.
Yeah, there's the shared portions of the stormwater management system. Let's just put it that way, and let's call it that. Okay. And, uh, other than that, I think we're good to go for a vote.
I'll move, I'll move that motion to approve these conditions.
I'll second it.
Excellent. So a roll call vote, please. Uh, Sally.
I.
Uh, Yicheng.
I.
Uh, Nick. Nick, you're muted.
I.
Uh, Kurt.
I.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have two more to go. Uh, let's, so our next one, thank you very much. Sorry.
Thank you, Daniel.
Uh, so with our next one is nineteen for plus. So this one, um, I think we can take a rain check on this one, I believe, um, is someone who is with this project here tonight.
Uh, yes, uh, hi, this is, uh, Kate Frotten. I'm the owner of nineteen Verplast. And I, I think you may be right. I'm a few steps behind where nineteen Hancock is in the, in the process. Um, I did meet with, I was on the agenda for the historical commission last night, and they're putting together um, a letter with some conditions, so I, I haven't seen that yet. Um, so, so yeah, I think, think you're probably right about that.
I think the, the one, the one difference, um, that I understand from a discussion I had with uh, historical commission is that you are seeking to sell the second lot rather than to build a house on it.
Correct.
And, and so that, so the, the weird thing about that is, as you heard us And, and so that, so the, the weird thing about that is, as you heard us talk about the design of the new structure on the other lot. That part, we don't have access to a new structure to talk about, so I think that this board will have to figure out. How we deal with that part of the bylaw.
Right, and I think in my conversations with the, with the historical commission. I think what we'd like to consider is whether it can be, you know, bounded, so that there's some. Definition of what could be built there. That would satisfy the town, if that's something that's would be considered.
Yeah, so that's something that I would have to talk to legal about, I don't know what sort of restrictions you can put on. That sort of a purchase.
Right, it, it, one of the things that we came up last night was that the idea that you'd put a. A deed restriction, it gets recorded when you do the subdivision into the second lot. And there's a draft letter of conditions that I think historical is coming up with. But we probably want the second lot to retain. The, the characteristics that it would have. It would have the same special permit characteristics after it's sold, so that it would. It would go through the same process as nineteen Hancock where. It would meet certain conditions. As, as a, as a quid pro quo to, to allowing it to be divided.
And Nick, am I, am I, and I think it would happen anyway because it's a lot that is a non-conforming lot.
Right, okay.
Is that right?
I, I don't know if, I don't know if it would, but that's something we would want to get legal.
It would definitely be a non-conforming lot, it's a tiny lot, it's, it's less than four thousand square feet.
So it would require site plan review and special permit.
Yeah, it would be, you know, unless you put in a, a tiny house, which I know some people on this board are excited about. Me is one of them, then it would still have setback issues unless you put in a tiny house. But certainly the lot size itself is too small.
The lot is actually larger than the lot next to it that does have a house on it.
It, I, yes, it's, but unfortunately according to the zoning, it's still tiny.
Yes, I agree.
Right, and in the spirit of four point five. I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, four point five, in the spirit of four point five. I can imagine that during the special permit and site rent plan review process, historical and design review. Would weigh in on the, the design of the house that would. By some future owner be proposed to be built on that site. And would encourage it to fit in nicely with the neighborhood and not, you know. Be of the wrong scale or something, so.
That's where I think that we need to put something in writing, so it's not just good intentions.
Yeah, we, we would have to see, exactly.
So would, would it be that we would say in some kind of emotion that, that we don't mind them dividing this property? In exchange for number one, preserving and restoring a really cool old house. But number two, doing what we, what we would require with the second lot?
We would actually not worry about that this evening because we don't have to vote on it this evening. What we would do is I would reach out to, or the, the planning board, someone would reach out to, to town council. And say, here's what we wish to do, please tell us what form this needs to take. And we'll leave it up to the lawyers to draft the lawyer that stuff.
All right, so we can, we can, we can move on, we can.
So, so Kate Frotten, thank you very much for joining us. We will see you again, hopefully soon, but we'll make sure that we get this moving through.
Thank you, I appreciate your time. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you. Our next one is One Winter Street and who is here for One Winter Street? Somebody has to be here for One Winter Street.
Yeah, I am, Chris Downey.
Okay, thank you. So this one, thanks for your patience. We are, this one I hope is really fast.
Me too.
So, so this is a ZBA petition number three nine nine zero. And this is a special permit to essentially make a porch. And E Ching, if you just bring up that. That picture which shows the before and after, the rendering, the actual that, that picture I think says it all.
It's not very artistic, that, that's me on Blue Beam, so forgive the rudimentaryness of it.
It, it's, all it needs to do is show us the difference. Town engineer, Mr., I know you wanted to get out of here early, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, this project does not increase impervious surface by five hundred square feet, does not trigger stormwater review. The proposed deck is set at an elevation outside of the FEMA storm, FEMA flood zone. But however, you know, in review of the files, it appears that there was an addition that was built in two thousand two. In compliance with FEMA regulations, however, it does not appear that the applicant at that time has submitted a. Elevation certificate of post-construction. So the engineering department will recommend to the building department that prior to a, a porch being built. That the applicant submit will provide to the town a post-elevation construction elevate. A post-construction elevation certificate meeting FEMA requirements.
I think, I think I did do that, whether or not it's in the right hands, I, I don't know, but.
Okay, well, Mr. Downey, if you could email that to me, we can, we can chat offline.
Okay.
Okay. So this one, I, I now remember this property from previous. Presentation before the board, before this work was, the other work was done, so this one is a much less controversial addition. So are there any concerns or questions about this project?
I only have one comment, which is that I think it's a nice solution.
Thank you. Last night they questioned why I wasn't covering the entire thing and I showed them a lot of examples around town where the, the partially covered porch is pretty. Kind of a predominant theme around town. They seem to like that.
So I would welcome a motion. To recommend approval, recommend favorable action on ZBA petition number three, three nine nine zero one Winter Street.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, roll call vote please, Sally.
Hi.
Nick.
Hi.
Kurt.
Hi.
E Ching.
Hi.
And Debs's eye as well, thank you all very much. For your patience again, thank you, Mr. Downey, good luck with your, with your construction project. Brian Manter, you are going to leave us, thank you for sticking it out, hope we didn't make you too late for whatever you need to get to.
Thank you, Brian.
Welcome, thank you for all your feedback.
Let us, so our next, our next thing in our agenda was to be MPIC membership and so. We do have. Oh shoot, I've lost things. Okay, so we actually have. We've got one member, Rich Rohan is here. And. Ms. Carney, did you want to talk to the board at all about your application? Oh, I've just given out who you are.
Oh, hi, I have, I, I'm still working on it.
Okay, okay, sorry.
I will get it into you by the end of the week.
Okay, thanks, I, I, I.
It's okay.
I just want to add Sue, that I think it's wonderful that you would consider applying for the master plan implementation committee. It's important work and I am grateful for your interest.
Thank you, Sally, I'm looking forward to it, I've been going through the, Rich gave me his copy of the book. So I've been going, reading through it. Um, Mike, I do have a question if, if this is appropriate, can I? Says I will have the application by the end of the week and I participate in the meeting coming up?
So we have, we have a meeting of this board in two weeks, I think that's before the next, am I wrong?
It is before the, you said March seventh is the next planning board.
No, 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 March twenty first is the, two weeks from tonight.
Oh, okay.
Twenty first, and I don't recall when the next.
Yeah, when's the next MPIC meeting?
That's a darn good question.
Four, twenty third, I think, it's Thursday.
It's a Thursday, so we should, we should be good.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. So the next.
We move on, have you had any response, do you know?
To what? No, as far as I know, we haven't had a response yet. So. I am going to grab the share now. And hopefully what you see in front of you. Is something that Sally and I worked on. Which is the. Whoops, that's not what I was supposed to do. So this is, so one of the things we said when we were redoing the position description was that we were going to. Move all of the details into the yearly performance plan. And so I apologize, this did not get to you in your packet, so this is new to you all. And I did, we're going to be working on this, probably the next meeting or so to finalize it and I will circulate it. I don't know why it's not making itself bigger, hold on a second. Someone making this bigger.
It's, it's nicely big.
Okay, good.
Hit the zoom button?
Yeah, so you want me to zoom it? There we go.
Wow.
Okay, so, so this is a, sort of a collection of set of notes. Based on the old position description and trying to. Put it into sort of an organized fashion to make sure we haven't left anything out. But also we need to recognize that the new town planner is going to sort of be swamped. So there's a lot on here which we have to be considered of the language. Because we're going to be evaluating the plan planner based on this. So we don't want to put things in here which we know are impossible. So the language should, you know, encourage performance. But not necessarily tie them to something which is impossible. So I'm just going to go quickly through this and since I no longer can see you, because I'm sharing, just yell out if you have something you want to say. So the first part is pretty boilerplate and it is direct. Super, um, um, support of the planning board. So we have meetings and public hearings and then the duties involved with. Posting notices and agendas, preparation information packets, tracking agenda items. And then this, I think is a good one Sally added, which is facilitating meeting attendance. And so that could be. Any number of things. Making sure that there's a mailing list that goes out with the agenda, which I think Brian already did. And I knew Suzanne, Suzanne Gill also has, she's inherited his list of people that the agenda gets sent out to. Then there is our specific roles that we have. And I took out the A and R here, Sally, because that's part of subdivision. So if there are any other roles that you think are important, those. I think there's, we, we have to add more in here because we do have roles which are really defined a lot by. By the state and there's wording in one of the other one, one of the other bullets here which talks about that and maybe we need to. So things like comprehensive land use. Those might, those are certainly some of our roles that may want, want to put up there. Let me know if I'm going too fast or too slow. This is essentially all of the, the background work that the planner would do. So if there's anything special here that we want to add. It's pretty comprehensive. I'm just going to take up the word PowerPoint, just because that's a trademark term. So here we have presentations, I was sort of wondering, do we want to be, this, this. How specific do we want to be about the reports? I mean, there might be. So there's also presentations before. You know, it says including following, but there's also presentations before the select board. Those could be in here as well. I'll just put that in as. Select board. Et cetera, because sometimes there are presentations made there. Then we have our, our planning department updates. And then I, I wonder if we want to also include something here like a quarterly. That's something that we would, we had talked about a long time in the past, but again, this is. This is for a new planner who probably doesn't have time for that, but. Then we've delineated the. The working groups and those are the existing ones that we have. So. I just realized this is more like a. They're not, it's not actually a planning board working group, this is the MBTA three A's, this is more like a. Interdisciplinary working group, so this is a intergroup, inter-town. Government working group. And then I think we need to, we need to review. The role the planner has in the transportation thing, I know that Brian was on T-TAC. And I think it's, it's useful, but I, I, I don't know exactly. How T-TAC and the transportation master plan. Sally, this is your language, do, is there actually a working group on this?
Well, I, I believe that the select board and T-TAC and tool design and the town manager. And possibly another group, I don't know whom, who it would be. Are working on creating as, as a, as an outcome of the master plan. A transportation master plan that would identify both. Priority projects around town of streets and intersections and sidewalk gaps, et cetera. That are just really bad and need to be prioritized to be fixed and. Creating across town pedestrian and bicycle. Network.
Yeah, so that, that was, that was in part what was presented by Tool last night. And so you, you, you think that that, that that is, that there is an actual working group. Which included the town planner.
Well, I believe that Brian used to go to all these meetings and I think that the planning board. I know that the select board is the commissioner of the streets. And the planning board simultaneously is talking about things like complete streets.
Yeah.
Bike lanes. So I would be in favor of the planning board having. A role in the transportation master plan, if there is such a thing as a working group, I think it's just. People who meet.
Yeah.
I don't know what the difference between people who meet in a working group is. But my, my interest is in having the planning board. I don't want to step on toes, I don't want to take over other people's responsibilities, I want an opportunity for the planning board to have input.
And so, yeah, so one of the, one of the things is, there's also T-TAC.
Yeah, they're, 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 T-TAC advises, if I understand. The select board.
Yeah.
On the direction that they would advocate.
Yeah, I'm just, what I, what I need to understand is personally is. Whether, so, so T-TAC I believe is one of those evening meetings that we're so worried about. And so I want to make sure that the T-TAC, the time spent at T-TAC. Is it a duplicate of the time spent here in the working group or is it, are they, are they complimentary? Or is it redundant? I guess that's what I'm trying to get at.
Well, it would certainly be a question to ask the chair of T-TAC or to ask whoever on the select board is the. Is assigned as the lead person on the transportation master plan. I'm, I just am advocating for the planning board to at least be. Part of the conversation and part of the regular updates. Because a lot of our work has to do with the quality of the public realm. And the public realm is property line to property line on either side of the street.
Yeah, no, I agree completely. I just, so I, I would suggest that the person probably who's best situated to tell us about that is probably Beth.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm just going to say, oh, this is not town meeting, this is town. Manager. There we go. So that, that would be that.
That's great.
So now we get to. Our commitments to the historical commission. And so. This, I believe, is encompasses everything that was in the. Previous position description. It talks about, I mean, we want the, it's to be their, their work, obviously. Advising us in the CBD, that's important that they get the support they need for that. And grant management. So the grant writing, management and. Man, I saw that's, so I. Facilitation of a consultant contract. I think that.
I think that Brian used to make sure that the consultant who was doing the yearly. Survey of Rochester's historic buildings. I think that Brian used to make sure that those bills got paid.
Did he do anything more than just the paperwork? Did he actually interface with them?
DK. Nick?
Yeah.
But I think it was, I would think it was not a lot of, it was, it was that he. Helped write the grant. And made sure that the consultant hired with that grant money did their work.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Because most, most granting entities require proof of use of funds.
Right, so that's, that's more than just grant management.
That, that is grant management.
Oh, really? Okay, I thought that would be oversight, I would claim, but.
Yeah, management includes proving that you used the money the way you said you would.
Okay, so it says that, so is this. Is this language redundant then?
No, because they have to facilitate the contract. The new planner will do what Brian did, facilitate the contract.
Okay.
And that includes making sure they get paid, making sure the contract gets signed and put in paper file and whatever.
Okay.
So other comments from board?
I, I just have a question. So, so with this. This would, it appears that it would not be the place to indicate whether they would attend. Some or all the meetings of the historical commission and, and assist in that regard?
We could. So that is actually kind of where it would go. So I think the language that.
I think it was something like.
Why won't this give me another bullet?
I don't know where that is.
Because you don't use Word.
No, because it doesn't like your. What if I do?
PDF? No.
This is, this is. Okay, well, you'll give me a bullet there. Okay, so let's, so the key here is.
I think the lang, the language was something like attend at least the majority of the meetings of the planning.
I think what we, what we agreed to in the memory of understand memorandum of understanding. Was that. Let's, let's make sure we adhere to that language. Well, I will just, I, I'm gonna, just so we can move on here, I'll put it.
Okay.
Put in language from MOU about attending. HC meetings, how's that? Okay. The staff heritage districts, staff comma here, yeah, so there are some. Some heritage districts that, that the planner staffs, but we only have the one right now, Rangelley. But we'll just keep it as.
Should it be Heritage District Meetings?
Well, all commissions, they're called commissions, right?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Like Rangelley Road, that's a Heritage District Commission.
I think it's a Heritage District Commission.
Nick, do you know?
I, I believe so.
Yeah, so. The, the, the previous thing was that Brian, I mean, they have like a meeting a year. And so. He staffs it, so that's, or they staff it, the new one, which is staff at the same level. So there's, there's a widespread confusion that the local historic district committees. Is actually attached to the historic commission, but it's not. It's attached to the select board. So it's.
So should this say under the direct direction of the select board, comma, provide expertise, et cetera?
I think we should just, no, because we want to, we don't want to have under the direction of the select board.
Okay.
We should say that they will provide expertise and advice to the LHDSC.
As requested.
I think it's. Okay, I mean, this is all kind of. We're requesting.
Well, it's really kind of odd. If local historic district study committees. By the way that the laws are written to create these. Are overseen by the select board. Then.
Well, we just, we just want to.
Why is it the planning, down planner's responsibility at all? Is that a question?
It's certainly a question. So apparently Mr. Leaf has raised a hand.
Yeah, so. I don't know if this will help or not, but. The select board authorized, I don't even know if that's the right word, on a local historic district study. For the Sims, I don't even remember, the Sims. That Jack was on and Brian was on and I was, I was asked to be like the architect on it and.
Yep.
Three or four other members. But just like a lot of the other meetings that we've all attended, Brian was extremely involved with it, with, with Jack. You know, attended all the meetings, rat, you know, sent out the emails and, you know, he wasn't, you know, he was. Pretty, he was pretty, I mean, I don't know where, where it's going to go now that Brian's not around, but. He, he was, he and Jack were kind of doing it together, like they were both taking the lead. So Brian was very involved in it.
Yeah, and I think the part of my discussions with Jack was that. Brian kind of was given that role because there didn't seem to be a person who wanted to be chair. And Jack said that as being on the historic commission, he was not able to be chair. And so. I think that the fact that we can't find a volunteer from the town who was willing to be chair on this study committee is. I really don't want, it has to be driven by, by the residents, not by town staff. So.
I think that sounds, I agree with that.
Yeah.
I, I agree with that too. I, I, I think that a lot of the things that Brian did, he did because he'd been here a long time and he had a lot of. Institutional knowledge and he was a very helpful and naturally affable and team player kind of guy. So, but then, given the structure of town government. Can the chair of that committee not be the town planner?
Well, I don't think the town, he was supposed to be the chair. Brian just took on that role because no one else was doing it.
So I think that if we just simply say what I said in for expertise and advice. That the new town planner will have an opportunity when she's, he or she has her performance review. To say, yeah, I provided expertise and advice to the local historic district committee, study committee. I helped them do this, this and this and this and this. And I'm not the chair.
Yeah, and I, I think that that's. So I think that the key here is that. We're calling out the LHDC as something that the town planner should be involved with. Because we don't want to leave that out. And I know that a lot of people would like to see some sort of preservation planner or something like that. So it's an important part of the town. So we don't, so this section is essentially calling out. By name, some of the particular ones that they should pay particular attention to, so.
Providing expertise and advice doesn't seem too onerous and.
Yeah, it's, it's.
And acknowledges the connection between the goals of the planning board as expressed in our master plan. Balance historic preservation and development without putting the burden on the town planner of running one of these study committees.
Okay, so I think we're agreed that this is the, the maximum involvement that we want at this point. So then we go down to, this is the. I think this is pretty much the wording out of the MOU. And then. We did call out. I think that's a semicolon maybe, but it doesn't matter. A couple of the important one, ones that, sorry, boards and commissions that Brian had a lot of interaction with. Just so that we list them, but again, we provide.
Besides historic and design review.
Yeah, those are called out, yep.
I'm very curious to hear from other members of this board. Whether in singling out those three boards. Are we omitting someone who's equally important? And should we not single out? Any of those boards? And simply end it with as it relates to land use planning and policy in the zoning bylaws period.
Can I try something? This is unrelated. Sorry, there's feedback. I wonder if it's Nick's, like, Nick, can you, can you mute? I think that's better. Yeah, thank you.
Well, this is, I think that's a good point, and that's one of the points we raised when we did the position description is by. Putting in names, we're explicitly leaving some out. Here, I. Since these are. I don't, I don't have a problem with taking them out, I guess. I mean, why don't we, why don't we pencil in this as being taken out? Let's see if I can do that with the fancy, I'm not gonna, I'll just do that. I want, I want to send this out to everyone.
Yeah, to, to, to the point that, that the town planner will, this is a performance review checklist, so. You get to number six and you say, well, so town planner, you've been here for a year. Tell us about all the expertise and advice you, you provided as requested to other boards, councils, commissions and committees. And they, as it relates to this, you know, land use planning, and they would say, I did all this, this and this and. And we would say, well, what about this? You never followed up on this. And they would say, well, actually that was tabled by that. And then we, we.
Yeah.
Address the question.
Okay.
Guys, people.
Everybody's quiet.
I know, I want, this is the thing that we're going to use to evaluate the town planner's per, performance. When they've been here for a year.
I would, I would, I, I, I would think that this is so new to everyone that.
Well, and also I apologize, I was supposed to get this to Diab by Sunday night.
That's okay.
So that we would be able to look at it. And I'm sorry, so we should maybe go through it once and talk about it lots.
Yeah, I think we should go through it tonight. I think we'll finish off tonight. We're just going to one show over and then. Everyone will take this home and mark it up like mad and then we'll talk about it again.
Are you going to send it out?
Yes, I will send it out.
Good, good.
So number seven. I think that. So residents, developers, I think property and business owners maybe. Because sometimes they don't fall into either category. So one thing here is I don't know that we can ma, make the planner be one of the primary contacts. Just because that's up to the rest of town hall to say, okay, sure, let the planner do that. But.
Well, so serve as one of the contacts and take out primary. I mean, the fact is, I know because Brian had been here a long time and he was a wonderfully warm and affable and helpful person. The people found their way to his office all the time.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe coming up with another, some language here which. Doesn't quite say that they're the primary, because we can't evaluate someone as, are you.
Also serve as a contact for.
Yeah, or, or something which is. More proactive. Because you can serve as a contact without. So let's, 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 let's think about.
As requested, provide to. Residents, developers, blah, blah, blah. Support regarding zoning bylaw interpretation and guidance.
So that I can have a big picture of what this, can you, can you show the end or how, how much longer is this?
It's almost done.
Okay.
It's almost done. The, the rest are just projects. So we're number thirteen, maybe we should choose a, a, an even number so we don't have unlucky thirteen. But. So this is pretty much.
I see a typo in twelve. I see typos everywhere.
Don't worry about it. So then we're talking here about, I wouldn't say use the word allied, I would just use. As a resource. This one, I don't know if it's, it's an important part of our role, maybe this should go up into the top part. Where it talks about supporting the board, so. Move to number one. This one, I think it's not just changes in legislation, but trends. And then I think we can get rid of Massachusetts because. I guess Massachusetts is key.
No, because sometimes something's happening in other parts of the country that are a trend. I mean, we all have seen this and I just want to compliment this board on how good everybody is at sending articles to each other. It's really good.
It is.
You go.
Continued professional growth. Yeah, so this one, I think we need to be. Yeah, I mean, MAPC does, there's a bunch of things. So I think we, I don't know if we need to put in particular programs. So let's. I just don't want to make it too prescriptive when we don't.
Well, because the APA, for instance, has lots of good programs. So just take advantage of programs targeting Massachusetts and. Other, but just targeting town planners and report on learnings.
Yeah, so I think this is, this is, we need more sort of like generic. Professional. Growth. Language with. I don't know if we want to put in specifics, so we'd want to say things like. Maintain whatever the heck he was. He was a certified planner, whatever that's called. Maintain certification. Continuing education. Et cetera.
Well, I mean, you could, if you were going to really crazy on this, you could say that you also demonstrate to the board a willingness to. To learn and, but that's not, let's just keep it simple.
Yeah, I mean, that's, 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 I don't know, I think that that goes into more of.
We're not, we're not.
Yeah, this is. But I, but there, there must be some, and I have to look and see what, what we, first of all, if the new planner isn't, then doesn't get that certified planner and, and Brian just got that over the last year or so. So the new planner may not have that, that.
But if, but if it's a qualification that we require for hiring of the position. And we hire somebody for other reasons, then we would make it a condition of their employment that by X year they would do X.
Yes, but, so we would put that sort of condition in here. Once we've learned more about the, their. Communication with town council. And then coordinate consultants, contracts and payments. And I think that's, if there's something we've missed, so this is the end of it. We're at our end for this evening in any case, so.
And then there's a review of the projects that are facing them in the year ahead, and I don't know if we have time to do that right now.
I would say that, no, because it's, it's nine twenty-nine.
Wow, up to the minute.
Yeah, so some of these, again, I don't know if particular. Yeah, so um, some of these, again, I don't know of particular. Putting particular things, you know, the particular projects in here, this might be, hey, here's what we're working on.
Well, I think that there are project specific goals, like. The project specific goal for number one would be to fully populate the committee and create a work plan and goals. And create a report to Fall Town Meeting or Spring Town Meeting. That's like, that's like where, did you do this? Yes or no?
Right, but but this is the, this, it's not the town planner's responsibility for the MPIC to do their work.
No, it's the town planner's responsibility to populate the committee. And they, you're right, they will create the work plan and goal, so that one comes out, but then.
Can't fully populate the committee either unless you're gonna give them, you know, the authority to go twist some arms.
I see, good point.
Yeah, I mean, so that's why, let's, I think it's important to keep these in mind, but let's, let's again, think about. Um, what's within the planners.
That's really, that's a really good point, because like, for instance, where it says tree, something or something. Um, it's not gonna be the town planner that revise the permanent street. And creates a tree management plan and creates a recommended budget. It's not gonna be the town planner that finalizes regulations for ADUs. Regulations that are, et cetera, yes.
So, so that's, we gotta be careful as to what we're, you know, they can certainly have a a hand in it. But beyond that, I think we have to um.
So Diab, the, this board has never seen this before, um. And so would it be on the agenda again for further discussion?
Oh, yes, yes, this will be on our agenda next time. We still haven't talked about. We are still, I still need questions from you folks for the interviews, so we're, interviews are coming up hopefully in the beginning of March.
Diab, did, did the whole board receive my memo, or was it just to you about? I wa- I found this book in my daughter's bookcase, and I had these questions that I came up with.
I have no idea.
Oh, did any of you, does that ring a bell with anybody on the board? Would you, Diab, want me to send that to the board as a springboard for them to?
If you feel like it would.
Focus their thinking.
Go right ahead, Sally.
Okay, I'll make a note.
All on you.
No, I'm not a personnel expert, I just found this book.
My, my, you can go ahead and do whatever you feel is appropriate.
Okay, good.
Because.
I just knocked over a huge jar of pencils, I'm sorry.
Um, okay, so I think we are at the end of our agenda. Let me make sure of that. It says that we adjourn at nine thirty, so we've. To an end of another meeting. Um, oh wait, someone's already moved, wow.
Yeah, I just want to say between Nick, I I mean, between Kurt and Eching, Diab, you don't stand a chance of running over.
Uh, well, okay, so it's been moved and seconded, um, so a ro- a vote, please, uh Sally.
I.
Uh Kurt.
I.
Eching.
I.
Nick.
I.
Diab says I as well. Thank you to our recording secretary Nancy Pocari, thank you Richard Lee from the Chamber of Commerce, thank you.
And Richard Rohan from the MPIC and Nancy for taking minutes, I'm gonna be calling you.
And thank you, uh, thank you, everyone out there in TV land. Uh, we will see you in two weeks. Bye, everyone.
Record.